Good evening. I call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order on November 21st, 2022. Mr. Zink, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Riddy.
President.
Ms. Bodie.
Here.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here.
Board, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, committed to the liberty and justice for all.
Board, we'll move to number three on our agenda, which is approval for the agenda. Do I have a motion? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Riddy.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Under Board President's comments, I have a statement that I would like to read into the record. Yes. Please pass it down. And Board, I will be seeking a motion of approval once we finish. The members of the Lakota Board of Education would like to address the investigation of Superintendent Matt Miller. Consistent with our statement on September 12th, the Board has not commented about the specifics of this case because the Board did not want to influence the investigation in any way. Now that all parts of the investigation process are completed, the Board is able to communicate some important details regarding the situation. First and foremost, Mr. Miller has been cleared of any wrongdoing. The Board of Education's highest priority is the safety of its students and its staff. The Board takes all allegations seriously, and the Board has relied on the findings by the Butler County Sheriff's Office, as well as its own independent investigation, including a full forensic examination throughout this process. Had the Board received any credible evidence of misconduct by the Superintendent or that he was a threat to students or staff at any time during the investigation, the Board would have placed him on administrative leave immediately. But there was no such evidence in this case. On August 17th, 2022, the Board first learned of allegations against the Superintendent. The allegations were initiated by a third party. They did not come from anyone who identified themselves as a victim. The allegations relied heavily on second and third-hand information and statements and did not come from an eyewitness. Furthermore, the documents provided in support of the allegations could not be verified nor were they presented in full or in context. On September 9th, Superintendent Miller was publicly cleared of any possible criminal charges by the Butler County Sheriff's Office in consultation with the prosecutor's office. As an additional step with regards to the safety of our students and our staff and with the Superintendent's full cooperation, the Board publicly announced an independent investigation into the allegations on September 12th. On November 2nd, the independent investigator reported that no evidence of wrongdoing was found. In addition to interviews, this process included a complete forensic examination of Superintendent Miller's professional and personal devices, as well as his cloud storage. As a final step in this process and per his contract, Superintendent Miller was evaluated by an independent psychiatrist for a fitness-for-duty evaluation. On November 14th, it was determined that he was unreservedly fit for duty. We understand that some members of our community may disagree. The Board is confident, however, that it exercised all due diligence in this matter. These claims against Mr. Miller were found to be false by multiple agencies, and these claims appear to have been personally motivated as an attack and would not have been brought if he were not the Superintendent. This has been a very long and difficult process for the Lakota community. In the United States of America, a person is innocent until proven guilty. With no credible evidence, placing the Superintendent on paid administrative leave would have substantially disrupted the district and would have unnecessarily damaged Mr. Miller's ability to lead. The Board will always act in the best interest of the safety of our students and our staff, and that's exactly what the Board did in this case, working with the Sheriff's Office, an independent investigator, ordering a forensic examination, and finally requiring a fit-for-duty examination. The Board would like to express its full support of Mr. Miller. Superintendent Miller has been an excellent leader in our district. He's one of the shining lights in education, both in Ohio and nationally, and we appreciate his full cooperation throughout this situation. While this has been a difficult process, the Board knows that it responded in a way that was in the best interest of our students, our staff, our families, and our community. It's now time for the Board's focus to return to our core work, that of educating Lakota students. Board, is there a motion to approve the Board's statement? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riddy. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie, you recognized?
This is about a code of conduct or code of ethics that has been broken by our superintendent. Our community is not proud of our superintendent. They are not proud to say that Matt Miller is our superintendent. And they are not proud to say that he has talked about his, that he, they're not proud to say that he talks about extracurricular, he has extracurricular activities that involve inviting strange men into his relationship, putting him and himself and his wife in physical and psychological danger. And the discussion of pillow talk was never denied.
False.
And the fact remains that you do not have the ethics that are wanted in a superintendent of Lakota.
Mr. Miller, would you like to speak?
No, I'm advising my attorney. I've been advised not to speak, but I appreciate the thoroughness of the investigation and the support from those of you that understand the whole picture.
Word other comments?
I'd just like to say this has certainly been a long and arduous process and something none of us chose to get into a discussion of, but I appreciate the thoroughness of the investigation and the challenges that this has created for everyone involved. So thank you for working towards handling this in the best way possible.
Ms. Casper and Mr. Riddy.
So I, your attorneys were. Okay. Checking that they had a hand in it.
Yeah, it has not been pleasant for any of us. I'm glad we were going to be able to get back to what we should be doing, which is educating children.
Mr. Riddy.
Yes. For the community to know, this was a very, very difficult time for all of us. And the honest is that if you have a situation, you rely on experts to do their job, and that is what the Board did. I know a lot of people will not be satisfied with that, but you cannot satisfy everybody. Opportunity was given to everybody to do, bring whatever evidence they have. None was found. So I appreciate the cooperation of Mr. Miller. I know it was a tough time for you too, and it's a tough time for, I believe, for all the Board members, but I know it was a tough time for me. And I appreciate you for, I would never do forensic investigation on myself because that's how much I believe that your cooperation was really good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I would also like to add.
Zink, anything?
No, I don't have anything to add this time.
I'm President. Mrs. Bodie.
My final thought is, I do agree with the statement that says the Board has relied on the findings from the Butler County Sheriff's Office because that is exactly what they found, was they authenticated that Matt Miller has had conversation of pillow talk, and they also confirmed that strange men have been invited into his relationship. So I do believe about this sheriff's office report, and I think it is valid.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just totally taken out of context. And I, that's all.
Without further discussion. Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Riddy.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
No.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. We'll move to number five, under Board Updates, Policy Committee, Board Policies for First Read. Mr. Vogelmann.
District held its policy meeting on Friday, November 18th at 11 o'clock at Lakota Central Offices. Included all of you, sitting in front of me and myself. This was to go over the 19 Neola updates, the one Lakota Review Policy, and the one new Lakota Policy. To do a quick recap, as I said, I would at the policy meeting, just so the public is aware where these policies are coming from and why they are up for review. For the 19 Neola Policies, four of them deal with weapons definitions. That would be Policies 1617, 3217, 4217, and 7217 due to updates over the summer in Senate Bill 215 and House Bill 99 concerning concealed carry laws and permits, but still making sure that everyone understands that there are still rules in place when you come onto school grounds, and the revisions in those policies reflect current law. Next two policies, a kind of similar idea. They kind of stick together. That'd be Policy 2430, 2431. These deal with clubs and athletics. Part of Senate Bill 181 that prohibits districts or interscholastic conference governing bodies from adopting any type of rule that limits students from wearing religious apparel at any of their competitions. And also made some changes to, when we talked about policy meeting to 2431, that we do our eligibility on quarterly checks. That was one that I need to follow up with you on, and that was amended in that update. Next block of policies are 5111, 8320, 8330. This deals with revision to current law. For those people that participate in the Secretary of State Safe at Home Program, they now have been issued a card for identification to verify that they are in that program, which protects their address information from general public. Next two that are together, 5335 and 5336, this deals with health care of students. This is part of House Bill 231. Policies are revised to reflect recent changes in the area of student healthcare, including medication management, responding to food allergies inside of a school setting. Then we get into the single policies, 2280 preschool program. This deals with the definition of two different preschool classrooms under the state's governing regulations. Definitions have been added to clarify the types of classes that may be offered by districts who operate preschool programs. Next policy, 2413, career advising. It's also a revision. It's been revised, part of Senate Bill 135, with added several requirements for information that must be provided to students specifically about how cost of post-secondary education may be offered and information about certain career fields. 312008, employment for personnel co-curricular extracurricular activities. This has just helped defining the information that goes for people that want to help and coach in athletic or activity-type-based events. They have to have a pupil activity permit. And so if you're a teacher, you still have to do that. But if it is a club that is not one of activity, you do not have to have that for, if you own a teaching license, but if you do not own a teaching license, you still have to have a PAP to lead that student group. 6700, Fair Labor Standard Act, the language has been added. Just a reminder of the obligation to provide reasonable breaks to provide facilities for nursing mothers. 7440, Facility Security. This is just a revision to what can be searched with by use of metal detector to update that language. 744003, the only thing done with that is an update of a new federal regulation citation at the very end of the policy. 8210, School Calendar. It's been updated now that the state has allowed you to develop school calendars for more than just one year, and language is added to clarify that makeup time may be building specific if a school is unexpectedly closed for whatever reason, as we're seeing some of our local school districts having to do that due to illness outbreak. Then the last Neola Update Policy was 8600, Transportation. These revisions provide additional clarification and direction for districts, which are already incorporated into state law, addresses the impractical definition for 30-minute safe travel time, and that you cannot reduce those scheduled routes once the school year begins. So those were the 19 Neola Updates that came out in August that I met with our representative in October and brought forth to you that are before you for first read today. The other two that I mentioned, the one Lakota Revision, is the 0169.1 Public Participation Board Meetings. These revisions are an attempt to modify the process and implementation of the public participation portion of the board meetings. Various reviews from over 15 other local school districts and legal counsel to review how the district can adjust the implementation of this portion of Lakota Board Meetings. Discussed in our meeting for over an hour on Friday and tried to frame those drafts and ideas into the first read before you. Had to do some adjustment on waiting for legal to get back about the sentence about talking about employees versus talking about board members. Board members are not the same as employees, so making sure that legal was okay with that middle part. So when that was posted on Friday afternoon, it was then changed by Saturday morning to include that sentence from legal and that I sent all of you that update on Saturday via email. And then the other policy is a new policy, which was brought forth from our Treasurer, Mr. Zink. He would like for us to approve and implement this new policy to ensure we have those required HIPAA protections. So those were the 21 policies that we covered on Friday.
So Board, again, this is first read, so we won't be voting on it, but it is the appropriate time for discussion. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. Did you say legal came back to you with some adjustments?
Yes.
I think I saw it.
It was in K?
Yes, it was the old K, which I think is now L. It just talks about the Lord, the Board will not hear compliments.
Sorry, it was J and now it's L.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Again, as I said in the meeting on the 18th, for 169.1, this policy update is unbelievably tone deaf, and to propose this at a time when parents rightfully see school districts in conflict with their sensibilities and rights to raise their children the way they see fit, you're making it tough on parents with this policy, and it is also not a time to limit the kind of talent that would come to speak, talent outside the community.
Anyone else? Mrs. Schaefer, Mrs. Casper?
I guess I'd like to address that point is that we have already previously, even back, I see this policy that was the prior adaptation that was 2013, and we did have limits on who could speak to residents, and we've prioritized that for a significant period of time. That's not a change in our policy. I don't know how long it stood before 2013. I just have the policy that had been in place since 2013. So clearly, for several years, that is not a new modification. I'm hoping that this will allow us to get to more business of the Board and the district. I also think it might be helpful if, because the policy is a little bit long, clearly it'll be available on our website and will be posted, but perhaps it might be helpful if we put something on the screen for when people were speaking to kind of have the Cliff Notes version of what our rules are, so it's easier for the presiding officer to speak to what those rules are and have an understanding of that. So.
It's a great idea. Normally, our timer is up there, so I don't know if we can do a double screen.
Yeah, I don't know.
Maybe. We'll look into that. It's a good idea.
Writing that down.
Mr. Sorry.
No, I'm done.
Mr. Vogelmann, before we do further Board discussion, could you explain a little bit more in detail, since there will be changes to our sign-in process? Can you, I know we're still working on that, but could you explain that?
Correct.
Should we expect this to take place at our next meeting?
Part of our discussion was how to sign up for public participation, and there's been a concern, a couple of things that we've heard from the public concerned about privacy, was having a sign-in sheet in which everyone can see everybody's address. And so trying to address that, also knowing there's a concern about ensuring that the people that we say can participate are allowed to participate and not losing their spot to someone who is not. And so how can we verify the five speakers that we permit that is before you today with being residents, business owners, students, employees, and parents? And so to do that, some other districts have done where you have to register in advance of the meeting. And so looking at that option of after the agenda is posted, of allowing people to register through an electronic means, we had had some minor discussion of policy about what that might look like. Discussion, probably the best thing to do is an electronic submission form through the website instead of an email, because who gets the email? When does it come in? Do an electronic submission form that would walk someone through the fields to be filled out, that then when they would hit submit, it's timestamped, you have it, and then the process will begin on our end at Lakota Central Office to verify that that is a person that meets one of those five standards that we asked for them to participate in. They would have up until nine o'clock in the morning of that meeting day to do that. We'd also have an option at our central office where if they did not have access to electronic means, that they could report to our Lakota Central Office, and we would make a way available for them to fill out a form either there or give them access to the electronic form that they could fill out. That way, we would have the list. No one would know who was speaking. It would be shared with President. Go down the list of speakers based on the form submissions that would have come in.
And they would be time stamped.
Yeah, and that's the whole idea of trying to do the form too, is that we talked about if we have a paper copy, then the person at the front desk at Central Office would have one of those timestamp machines that the paper would go in and timestamp it. Just ensure we were consistent with what we say.
So, I have a question. How, how will that happen for the next meeting? Because we won't, we won't be able to do that. So we'll have to think of a different sign-in procedure and checking for the next meeting because if we don't vote on it until the beginning of the meeting and the public comments right after, we would have, there would be no way to do that. So that's something we're going to have to figure out.
That's something the Board wishes to try and get in place before the meeting. We can try and work on that and communicate out as best as we can in advance.
Anything else, Mrs. Casper?
I have something. Yeah. Okay, just make it clear to the community for those that may not have detailed of what the plan that we have is, we're trying as much as possible to hear from the members of our community. And that is why we have to make sure the guidelines are clear. And this is a business meeting. We want to hear from the right people. We have 30 minutes to hear from our community, so we're not trying to prevent the community from speaking to the Board. We want to make sure that the opportunity is given to the right people. That way, before you speak, we confirm you either have a business in the area or in the district or you're a resident in the district. This is not in any way or form trying to prevent the community from speaking to the Board. That is why we want to make sure we get this clear. Now, I thought I should make that clear for everyone to know why we do this. It's not to prevent the community from speaking to us. Thank you.
Well, your actions prove otherwise.
Mrs. Casper, you're recognized.
I think it's important to remember that board meetings are to conduct business. It's a limited public forum, which means that what you're speaking on should be relevant to the business that we're doing in the meetings. It's not a, like Mr. Riddy said, we're not trying to squelch you. There's other ways to get in contact with us, but it's not, we're not taking away your freedom of speech because of the kind of meeting that this is. It's a limited public forum, and I have all kinds of information here that says we have the ability to be able to do our business and do our business like the way it should be done, instead of like a question-answer or a protest or a free-for-all. So that's all we're trying to do here, is we're just trying to do our business and do it the best way we possibly can and still be able to hear from the public.
Mrs. Bodie.
The people I represent are not buying this ruse. It looks like you are, and I'm sorry, but it looks like you're trying to shut the community up from speaking up against Matt Miller, who's trying to bully people, and to being quiet and not speaking up for the community. That's what this looks like, and it's bad timing. It's a bad policy, and you're not respecting the parents of our community and their voices. Mrs. Bodie, you represent all of the community, not just your people.
I don't understand.
Mr. Riddy.
Yes. This is, when we are making, we're doing this is for a long time. I know at this time, we have situations that people are either satisfied or not satisfied, but we're setting a precedent in this school district. We want to make sure that going forward, even after every dust has settled, could be 10 years, five years, three years from now, the community should know that this is a business meeting conducted in a public setting. It's not a public meeting. And like Ms. Casper said, there are many ways you can sit, send in whatever your grievances or whatever observation you have to us, but we have 30 minutes to do business. This year, I know we have been distracted. I believe that there are plans I have by now, we shouldn't be where we are. We're in the business of managing the students and make sure education, academic achievement, athletics, wonderful things that used to happen in this school district is back on track after COVID. We've been distracted for too long. Let's get back and do business. If you have any issue, send it to us, but this is, we have to set a record. We have to be careful too in the future, so that we don't only get leftovers from other school districts to come. We're going to be hiring teachers. We're going to be hiring staff, different form of staff. We have to do things professionally and do it right. Thank you.
Other comments? Mrs. Schaefer.
We spoke in our policy meeting about just that, that we want to be professional and do this right because, as you've mentioned, Mrs. Bodie, in the past, there's concern about retention of high-quality staff. And if we continue to allow people from the mic to have allegations made, whether they're substantiated or not, I think that could have a significant impact on not only our ability to hire new staff and recruit new staff, but also to retain high-quality staff. And I want to make sure that our staff knows that we are not going to support potentially libelous or slanderous information being presented at the mic.
Mr. Riddy. Mr. Miller, Mr. Zink, anything?
Just thanks for your work on this, Mr. Vogelmann, especially over the weekend and making all these changes. Thank you.
So, Mr. Vogelmann, I'll be the last here. I will say, I know the quarterly updates are always a bear to get through, and thank you for that. Appreciate the good work on that. And that you made that very easy to go through during the policy committee meeting, so thank you for the organizational part as well. The Board did have a tremendous amount of discussion around the public participation policy. I think we actually talked for over an hour on that one policy, and it's something that we are trying very hard to get right. We do not want to be in the situation of more lawsuits to be filed against the district. Those are taxpayer dollars that don't go to students, and that's important to us that we get this right. I will say that the Board was not necessarily in agreement. We had a lot of good spirited discussion around the issue of the topic. Do we allow employee comments, good, bad, however? Or do we not have any whatsoever? And so the majority of the Board landed with, we're going to just not have employee comments, and this is going to be very different for us. Because in the past, we've had many people come to the microphone. Mrs. Bug is an example of, Mrs. Bug is the most amazing kindergarten teacher. And those kind of comments won't be allowed either. There'll just be no comments regarding employees, whether they're complaints or they're compliments. And we would ask our community. And we would ask our community to please send those through other channels, through email, through building administrators. There are many other ways through, through the Lakota listens on the website. We're very much interested in hearing compliments and complaints and being able to resolve those issues. This is going to be difficult to enforce, which is something that I said at the time. And I did lean toward the, the First Amendment right of we'll take whatever comes and let whatever people want to say be said. However, I also said I would go with the will of the board. And this is the will of the board and we're going to do our best to make this work. I do want to suggest to the board that we consider in six months, taking a look at this again through policy committee and just seeing how it's working out for us. And understanding if there are any adjustments that we need to make in our process or language. And I'm hoping that this is going to work out much better all the way around. Go ahead, Mrs. Schaefer.
Just a point of clarification, the reason that that decision was made is you cannot do one without the other. So if you take compliments, you have to take complaints. And historically, our policy said we would take complaints in executive session. And that is what was determined that if we're going to take compliments at the mic, we have to take complaints. So that's why we're not doing either, just so it's clear why that decision.
Thank you for the clarification, yes. Mr. Vogelmann, anything further? We'll be working to get the word out on how our um comment section will work for the next meeting.
Yeah, uh, just two things. Number one, as mentioned in August twenty second board meeting, when I gave my last policy, I will still continue to monitor what may happen with anything dealing with Fairness and Sports Act. And also student political clubs, groups, if anything starts to come out of Columbus with that, or we're still monitoring that. We haven't turned the page on that, we're just pausing on that. And I would give, I would give kudos to you as a board for doing policy as a group. Um, instead of having two people and then bringing the discussion here for an hour, I think it's much more productive as Friday, yeah, maybe there's not agreement, but the work got done and everyone's on the same page. And so I know that takes a lot of time to do that and it's not easy, but I give you kudos for, for doing that.
It should be, it is the board's setting direction for the district. This is amongst the most important thing that we do. And it should be transparent conversation and it was, it was. Uh, I said it in the policy committee meeting, it was like watching sausage getting made. It was, it's not always um good conversation, but I do think it's good to have direct conversation around these kind of issues.
Madam President.
One moment, please. I also want to say that uh as a part of this process, we ask Mr. Vogelmann to please reach out to several of our other school districts, see what they were doing so that we understood what other districts were doing. I also know that while we were at Capitol Conference, several of us attended multiple sessions on this topic so that we understood where are we legally, where are we in terms of whatever districts are doing? What are the best practices for public participation? Because every one of us up here believes that public participation matters and it's important to us. So I think a tremendous amount of time and energy has gone into trying to get this the way it needs to be. But again, look to six months from now, look at it and see how's it working for us. Mrs. Bodie.
I just can't express how disgusted I am with the fact that you four are okay with stifling the good that the community likes to express about a teacher because you are afraid of hearing the bad and the feedback. That's, I mean, the, I, I'm speaking to all of you all. I know that you like to brag about good teachers and
Please direct comments to the board.
I'm disgusted. I, I can't express any, my, I, I just can't express it in any other way. I just think that it's absolutely ridiculous that you can't, that we're not gonna allow positive and negative comments about people from the school district, from the community.
Mr. Dean and Mr. Zink, and then I'll wrap this up so we can move on.
Um, this is for the community to know. I have a lot that I would have loved to say, but Ms. Bodie, open, open up something. I want to say this. I work in corporate America and I know what it means to give a public feedback to employees. Comments given in a public session. First of all, like I said before, we have set it a precedent. This, now you may want to, to hear that. But in the future, where you're gonna be searching for experts to fill vacancies, that is what they're gonna look at. How can I go to a school district where they expect, I mean, I will get my feedback in an open session. That is not gonna work. The only people you're gonna get here is, excuse my, my language. Teachers that are looking for peanuts. And only monkeys go for peanuts. Uh, just excuse me. We need the best of the best to come to our school district. We don't want people that will look at it and said, that's good district. I don't like to go there. This is how they treat their employees. We have to make sure we have the best for Lakota. So we're protecting the students, we're protecting the teachers, we're protecting the community, taxpayers, everybody. Let's do what is right. And be myopic and looking at maybe today because you have a particular issue that you don't want, you want to set the precedent? Then look at it. Community members, this is what I'm, I'm trying to share with you. I'm here for seventeen thousand five hundred students. I'm gonna do whatever I can with my peers to make sure that this school district remains the best. And I'm not gonna narrow myself to few things that are distractions. I thought by now we should have gone far. Thank you.
Member is not recognized and does not have the floor. Or, Mr. Zink, please go ahead.
I just wanted to add for the transparency that all committee meetings that have five board members, they are recorded and we have those on the YouTube channel for anybody to view also.
Thank you.
If anyone would want to watch it.
So I will wrap this up by saying, one of the key pieces that the, the district and the board needs to consider in these kind of decisions is what are we spending on legal fees? What are we doing with legal challenges? How does that impact our district? It does have an impact on our district. And it does have an impact on our budget. And so that has to be a consideration in the decisions that we make, certainly not the only one, but it is a consideration. I'm going to move us forward now. So board, there'll be a second read on these policies. If you see any concerns you'd like to express to Mr. Vogelmann, please let him know. And again, thank you, Mr. Vogelmann, for your work. Board, we will move to number six, board action, motion to approve the settlement agreement. I am looking for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Mr. Miller, Mr. Zink.
No comments.
The settlement agreement is um for the First Amendment, I'm wanting to say. For the violation that we had of that, so. It's been attached to the agenda.
Thank you. I'll take a, uh, roll. I'm sorry, I have a first and a second. I'll take the roll call.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Are we voting? What's the roll? I'm sorry, can you state the roll call? Are we voting on?
The roll call is in front of you, number six, the board action, the motion to approve the settlement agreement.
Well, I would like discussion first. You didn't talk about discussion.
We are in the middle of the vote. Is there a comment you would like to make?
Yes, I would. The board president has made many bad decisions in conjunction with bad advice and this absolutely shouldn't have happened. It's disgraceful and shows a lack of respect. So let's try to make a new policy that respects our parents' voice.
Would you like to place your vote now?
Ms. Bodie.
Yes, I vote yes to approve the settlement.
And Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Board, a move to treasures, recommendations, number seven, the approval of the five year forecast. Mr.
Presentation first.
You, would you like to go ahead and then we'll do a motion?
Sure.
All right.
Do the presentation first. Okay. So now we're moving on to the five year forecast. This is sorry, my phone's vibrating in my pocket. Okay. So this is the forecast, um, as we've put this together at this time. So we'll go back to what's the purpose of a five year forecast? So the forecast is a long range planning tool used to help the district navigate financial issues and foresee what's coming in the future. This is only a snapshot based on what we have at this time. And although we review this internally quite often, this is for planning purposes. And we bring this forward for an approval in November and we'll also again in May. So the first part, if you're looking down the forecast, we'll start with the revenue section. And of our operating revenue, sixty-nine percent of this is with local sources, with thirty-one percent coming from the state. So as you can see with Lakota, a big portion of our operating revenue does come locally. Notable revenue assumptions. So this forecast shows stable real estate collections. We have included within this forecast, there was a tax dispute within Westchester that went back to the twenty twenty reappraisal. We have included that in this. This is an increase of the valuations by six and a half percent or an additional hundred and four million dollars of value. State funding, that's assumed to remain stable through FY twenty-three. However, we should note that the district is on a guarantee. What the guarantee means is based on the funding formula, we're receiving a bit more than what the calculation would provide for us. Uh, in twenty-three, that is four point one million dollars. Sorry. Okay, so we also have TIF collections here in Liberty Township, Westchester, Butler County. We have TIFs there in all three of those entities. Uh, the TIF collections, they're actually estimated in fiscal twenty-three to increase a bit. This is due to some additional properties being pulled into the Cincinnati Dayton Road TIF that we have. This shifted fifty-five million in valuation over to the um other revenue because this TIF is funded back to the district at one hundred percent. So that won't have a negative impact for our district. It just shifts revenue from one line of the forecast to another. And on top of that, another uh area of interest for this year is our interest. One of the positive things of having a strong financial or a strong cash balance is interest rates are up. Although interest rates being up kind of have a negative effect in other areas of the forecast, this is one area where we're going to see a positive impact for this fiscal year. So challenges to the operating revenue, I kind of look at this as the section kind of fiscal twenty-four moving forward. Currently, we're in fiscal twenty-three. So one of the things that we've included in this is we have actually a tax update in fiscal or in calendar year twenty-three, it'll be in twenty, collected in twenty-four and also reappraisal in twenty-six. So at this time, we are showing that class one, which is our um residential and agricultural valuation will increase by six percent. And class two, which is commercial and industrial, would go up by an additional two percent. That's in the update in twenty-three. As we go further out into twenty-six, we are assuming a three percent class one and a one percent class two. Now, so that we have a bit of comparison so that everybody can kind of understand what we had in twenty. Class one increased by thirteen point three three. Class two increased by eight point five five. Now, the thirteen point three three increase that we had, that did not include this additional increase that, that we're getting ready to see. So we do believe this is a bit conservative, but I added another bullet point for the economy. Assuming the economy stays relatively stable, we're still seeing new construction growth. This would be viewed as conservative, but that also does add a layer of risk that if interest rates continue to rise and that stalls out our local economy, then that would have an adverse effect on this section. So we'll continue to monitor this in the future. Um, also, just like I said in the previous slide, interest rates. If the economy takes a different shift, if inflation kind of starts to decrease, that's a wonderful thing. But that would be an area that we might see a little less revenue in this section of the forecast, so. Something to keep in mind. Um, House Bill one-ten with the fair school funding plan. With us being on the guarantee in fiscal twenty-three and assume that we will be on that guarantee through the remaining uh portions or forecasted period through twenty-seven, uh, we have to continue to monitor student enrollments. We have to continue to keep an eye on if these will hit some of the funding components that we can receive additional funding. Or if additional students doesn't necessarily equate to additional revenue. So we will service our students, but that could be some, some areas that might be negatively impacted here. This is just a historical clip of our operating revenue. You will see that um fiscal twenty-three, the, the final five years, that is our forecasted period. And we have actuals from two thousand ten up through. So at the last meeting, we were asked the question of House Bill nine-twenty. I'm glad to see Mr. Argo in the audience as well. So when brainstorming and thinking about how we wanted to capture such a tricky concept because it doesn't seem like it is, but it always does feel like it is. Um, so a millage collection, the way this works is, is your, your property is a appraised value. So everybody always likes to use a hundred thousand because it's just simple math. So if, if it has an appraised value of a hundred thousand, then you have a tax assessed value, which would be thirty-five percent of your appraised value. From there, you pay one dollar for every thousand dollars of tax assessed value. So for that hundred thousand dollar home, you'd be looking at thirty-five dollars. So in the millage effect of House Bill one, or of nine-twenty, sorry. So this example, I want everybody to think that this district is made up of one house. Just to keep this painfully simple. So originally, let's just say in nineteen fifty, who knows when that was, originally this house was built and it was appraised value at a hundred thousand. The taxable value becomes thirty-five thousand or the one mil collection would be thirty-five dollars. So now fast forward to today. If we fast forward to today and now that home over time just increased in values through reappraisals and updates, nothing changed. It's now worth a million dollars. If that home is now worth a million dollars, the taxable value would be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We would still collect thirty-five dollars on that. Because the millage that would be effective now would be point one mil instead of the one mil. So that's how this kind of works. The more value we have, the more this rolls back.
And the impact of the taxpayer is?
The same or less. In the, in the, in the example that we created here, it would be the exact same because this is one house. But the theory is, is as your district grows, we have more homes that then share that burden, which is why that becomes less for everyone.
So it's not like when you have new subdivisions, you're getting new money. You're just, everybody's splitting the, the millage.
You, you get new money on the growth, on the growth of that new construction. But then once that's established, then it's less for all.
Right.
So.
Splitting all of the millages between more people.
That's correct, yep. Okay. So now, this was a slide that, that we put together on the fly today. That is the impact on Lakota's general fund. This is only our general fund because this is, I was able to pull in the actual millage calculations that we have on this current five year forecast from tax years. This is also in tax years. It's something that I don't know if people would appreciate, how many different calendars we have to juggle. So this is in tax years. So this forecast goes through tax year twenty-six. That would be our first half collection in calendar year twenty-seven. So as you can see, in the actual years from ten all the way through tax year twenty-one, which we're currently collecting in, it did take a little bit of a dip, which is where you'll see that millage go up slightly. Then it began to go up. As it goes up, that Then it began to go up. As it goes up, that effective millage comes down. So. And this was based on the class one. So the impact to our taxpayers, this is our overall, this is our effective. This, this includes our general operating, these numbers on the screen right now. This includes our permanent improvement. This includes our bond collections. Those are not in the five-year forecast, only general operating. But as you can see, from two thousand and twelve to twenty-one, we actually are collecting overall three point seven three mils less than we had been. So House Bill nine-twenty in a nutshell.
I think you could say that one more time. That is.
That is, that, that is great news. Yeah, it's. But it's because our, our tax base is growing and as that grows, we see the decrease.
And that's even with the passage of a levy during, wasn't it two thousand and twelve?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yeah.
So that's with the passage of a levy, it's still lower millage than it had been.
That is correct. That is correct. And if I back up a few slides, thirteen's where you see the, the peak go up. That was when that was passed. So and then it's just gradually come down since. Any questions on House Bill nine-twenty? Hopefully that was.
I think that you did a very nice job of simplifying it and thank you for providing that. I think again, there's great confusion when I continually read that because property values went up twenty percent, we're collecting twenty percent more. And that's simply not the case. And, and to make it a little more complicated than I appreciate how you tried to make it super simple. There are times when an individual's tax bill, their property might have gone up more than average. So they might see a slight increase, but then that means somebody else in the community went up less than average and they'll actually see a decrease in their bill. That happened to me one year surprisingly and I was like, interesting. So good or bad, I guess it was probably actually bad for me because my house wasn't going up with the market. But it does have an impact on your bill year to year.
Another, another thing worth noting is you will see at the side, the millage goes down to twenty. The reason that goes down to twenty is that's the twenty mil floor. By law, we can't go below the twenty mil floor. So when you do hear of a twenty percent increase, where you would see that increase would just be in the inside millage with, which Lakota has six point four nine mils on the ten mil inside. So that would be the bit of an increase that everything else would roll down because of that until you got down to that floor, which we're not close to at this time.
Yep.
Okay. Now moving on to expense. So operating expenses, this is a snapshot of fiscal year twenty-three, our current fiscal year. This is our overall. So salaries, benefits and purchase services makes up ninety-four percent of our overall general operating budget. So this is our general fund. Notable expenditure assumptions for this year. We have wages. Our wages, I believe, to be fairly represented based on our collective bargaining agreements that span through fiscal year twenty-four, next year being the last year of both our certified and classified agreements. Also, we have healthcare that in this fiscal year, we have reflected at the eight points, eight point eight percent increase that we realized. So this forecast is also S R funding. Why in the world would we have S R funding on here when S R funding is not in our general fund? Well, it's because we do have staff that we are currently paying with S R funds and they normally would not have been. So this is something that we have to constantly keep an eye on to make sure when the S R funds come back, we make sure that we're fairly capturing them back on where we establish the programs. So that's, that's why the S R funding is on there because at this time of our expenditures, that has had a positive impact on our general operating fund. So on top of that, we have transportation. Of the eighteen percent that you would see in our purchase services, transportation makes up fifty-four percent of that. That is the biggest driver of our purchase services line. A lot of districts would have that in their wages and benefits section because they would have that internally. We contract out with Peterman. So because of that, fifty-four percent is made up of our purchase services. And also the fuel this year, we are seeing a major increase in diesel fuel. However, you might not see it increase by like a automatic double. And that's because we have less routes. We have less routes due to a driver shortage. We have a little bit less payments going to pay because of this driver shortage. So due to that, we're going to constantly keep monitoring that to see where that would come in at. But the fuel is actually reflected in our supplies line. So that would go down one more notch in our forecast if you're looking through that. Now we have the challenges. This is the, the places where we're going to see the impact moving forward. So as mentioned before, twenty-five through an assumed twenty-seven, that's when we would be negotiating our bargaining unit agreements. So we'll start that process in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four. At this time, we're just assuming a two percent there. That's a placeholder. That's something so that if it's more, it's not as much. It's, it's a bit of forecast. And if it's a little bit less, then we would adjust as such there. However, no additional staff are assumed in this forecast at this time. But as mentioned before with our guarantee, if we see student enrollments changing, then we would see an impact there. So you got to keep that in mind and that's one of the negative impacts that guarantee has on our revenue. It's not dollar for dollar necessarily. When we see student increases, we would see additional funding at the state level. Now, if it came through with new homes, we would see a little bit of an increase there. So that would be a good thing. And then as mentioned also, we're going to keep an eye on the S R funding, the staff coming back. We also have the healthcare. Healthcare is at six percent assumed. We're at eight point eight this year. We're assuming a six percent moving forward. How could that be? Over an eight-year period, we actually seen about a three point two percent increase. So this is a place where we just recently switched to self-insured. We're going to continue monitoring for our trends. So that's a place, there's a lot of places in here where we have to keep trying to establish where our trend data is coming in. So again, with the transportation, fuel costs, the driver shortages, we're going to continue monitoring that for future, future years. At this time, this forecast kind of represents everything going back to a relatively normal on that transportation line. So and then finally, the, the master facility plan. That master facility plan, although those expenditures of that would not directly show up here, indirectly, we could see some value. We've got some questions that have come up about the, the classroom sizes and things like that. That's going to majorly play into that master facility plan. And I don't think anybody would like to see trailers parked outside of, you know, for additional facilities. This is a slide along with the revenue. This is a slide of our historical operating expenditures. So as you can see, they kind of increase over time and they do out, they do increase just a bit faster than our revenues are forecasted to be increasing. In this line, you'll see the yellow bar that represents our sixty-day cash line. We actually have a policy that's ninety and in the next forecast, I will probably update that to be a ninety to better represent our policy. But the green bar represents our cash at the end of these years. So as you can see, we still have a bit of a gap, but it begins to expenditures begin to outpace our revenues beginning in fiscal twenty-five slightly. In summary, to wrap this up, this long piece of work that we've all put into this, this is just a snapshot in time. This is what we have believed at this moment, based on the information that we have. This is not going to be etched in stone. This is going to change. We are going to see movement. That's normal. We always see that happen. We're just going to continue monitoring and, and put the numbers to the best information we have. Something else that in, in this summary that I definitely want to make sure that everybody keeps remembering. Our oldest actual data in this five-year forecast is FY twenty. That was the first year of the pandemic. We saw changes happen in that year. We saw more changes happen in fiscal twenty-one. We don't have normal trends in this forecast compared to what we were used to seeing. So that is definitely worth noting. Finally, one last beyond the summary. This is only one data point. This is only one place where we provide information to the community. We have all of these other resources. We encourage people to go out and check and to look at and bring us feedback and questions if you have any. So this was added in. If you look at the assumptions, we have all of these actually hyperlink in that final page so that it makes it easy for the community to review if they choose to.
Mr. Zink, that was a fine presentation. I appreciate the student pictures that were in there because it's a reminder of why we're here.
I want to give a shout out to Ms. Fuller at this time. She really helped me make this thing look a whole lot better. PowerPoint is not my strong suit and so Ms. Fuller did an excellent job helping me look a whole lot better than I would have.
She made you look a lot prettier. That's, that's for sure. Board discussion, questions, comments, concerns?
I have a comment to make.
Mr. D.
Um, Mr. Zink, thank you. Because I know there was a lot of requests from the community. Many people have been saying that they want to, they want to see everything you do on the website. And I can see that that is done. So that is awesome. I know we made that request before. It, we would ask, you were not the treasurer at that time, but so came on board and you put that out and that's good for the community to go in and see the books and look at the numbers and have questions I can ask. Thank you so much for doing that. Thank you.
Others?
Um, thank you for the presentation. And I also, I, I like that we talk about how it's a snapshot in time and it could change tomorrow. It could change next week and I appreciate that we watch it constantly and that we have discussions on. We don't want to get to the, we don't like losing the money. So and every time we've done a five-year forecast, that's moved out, you know, years to, to the end. So I appreciate that and I also appreciate that you have given us all the opportunity to sit down and discuss it with you in further detail. So thank you for that. It does make it a lot easier to understand.
I want this to be as easy as possible for everybody. The better the board and, you know, like we've worked extensively at the exec team level. And I again say, thank you for everybody humoring me for that. But the better everybody understands this, the better it all comes together, you know, we'll get there.
And everybody's watching. Everybody should be watching. It should be.
And everybody has an impact.
Everybody has a piece of that, so.
Um, a question on the guarantee, you mentioned that. So now we have been seeing a growth in students. So just to confirm, is it, we are not seeing an increase in revenue with that increase in students currently because of being on the guarantee?
At this time, you'll see a very slight increase in the revenue on that state line and that's due to those components. Assuming when we have that student growth, we're going to see some component growth with our transportations and things of that nature, but not with that core. No.
Okay.
That's correct.
Um, and.
Not at this time. Now, again, back to that economy. I mean, the state is saying that the economy is strong and that could change. You know, right now we're being funded off of components of fiscal year eighteen. We're in twenty-three. So all of this could come into a better picture for everybody in the state as well.
Right. Well, and we've gone back and forth on whether that by any, it's a current budget and the six-year phase in funding formula actually is going to get phased in over six years. It seems like one legislative report, you hear it is, and then the next it isn't. So I think again, to your point of it being a snapshot, that, that could all change as well if things somehow go differently than are currently anticipated.
Whether good or bad, we will continue to monitor and dial it in.
And I don't think we'll know on that until the day they vote on it.
Exactly. We never do.
It's somewhere around the last day of June.
Yeah, hopefully. Um, and then another thing to point out, I was looking at this forecast relative to our old forecasts and kind of doing some number comparison. And I thought it was interesting and I wanted to compliment the staff. We often talk about reallocating resources and how we make an effort to do that. We talked at the last meeting about how we were not going to, we're not planning to replace ten positions through attrition as people have moved and based on losing some of those S R funds. And it was interesting to me that I looked at the twenty twenty forecast, so just two years ago, and it showed that we would potentially have deficit spending starting in twenty twenty-one. And now this forecast reflects twenty twenty-five. So it's interesting just in two years and kudos to the staff for all of your hard work and making sure we continue to focus on being fiscally responsible and reallocating anytime we can and doing what we can to continue to provide excellent student experiences in a fiscally responsible way. So thank you for that.
In November of twenty twenty, November of twenty twenty, that, yes, it did have a deficit there. And then by the time we hit spring, we had a pandemic and the state reduced funding and everybody didn't even know if what was going to happen. I mean, it was, that was a very wild year. That was fiscal twenty-one. Yeah.
Yes.
I'm not sure it's improved that much. Mrs. Bodie?
Thank you, Adam, for putting this together. I definitely have learned more from you than anyone in our financials. I will say that there are some examples of programs that I, some expenditures of programs that I still question on why we are spending money. The benefits of these programs are still unclear and the community that I represent still has yet to see the data that supports the expenditures of these programs. And, and along with that, we also support a, we pay for a superintendent that is sexually deviant. So unfortunately, I will not approve this only because I do not accept some of the expenditures that we are spending and that is nothing that has come, that is your fault.
Sure.
Um, but I don't, the community that I represent is not going to agree to some of these expenditures. And Kelly, on your, on your ask, on your comment that you said earlier, you do not represent everyone in the community and you do not represent what is all, what is all your job, your job.
Let's stay on topic, please. Board, let's stay on topic, please. Let's stay on topic, please. Are you finished, Mrs. Bodie?
Done calling me names?
All right, I, please stop. I have some comments and a couple of requests as well. So we've talked about the S R funds before and thank you for providing the document that you did to us. Would you just, for those who don't have the sheet in front of them, would you just very briefly answer three questions? What's the total we've received in S R funds? What has been spent and what is left to still spend? Just so that's clear.
So what we have received is just a little over twenty and a half million dollars. What we have spent is somewhere a little bit, I want to say a little bit above eight million and we have about twelve remaining.
And then could I ask for an addition to this page? Not, it's not urgent, but actually, I'll talk to you about that on the side.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that is not reflected. These S R revenues are not in the five-year forecast.
Right.
But some of our expenditures have migrated over.
Well, and I think when you look at, um, back at twenty twenty, we're able to push the, the deficit spinning out in the way that we were because of that influx of dollars, which we were not anticipating and certainly helped us to get through a difficult time. So appreciate that. I have a question about the general property tax revenue. So as I look at that for the past, I, I think those numbers are correct. Book me, correct me if I don't have them. So for twenty twenty-one, it was actually five point six. For twenty-one, twenty-two, it was three point two. For twenty-two, twenty-three, it was three point three. And I believe what you've listed is four point five. Just help me to understand why we're going a little bit higher than what we've seen in the average. Is it because of what happened with Westchester Township?
Are you talking about the collection?
Yes.
You're talking.
Revenues. Yep.
Yeah, so we have a very, very odd year right now because the Westchester collection, this is actually assumed. the Westchester collection, this is actually assuming that tax year twenty, twenty-one and the current twenty-two that would be coming would be made up in that calendar year twenty-three collection, which would show that bit of an increase. There is still a little bit of unknowns as to how that exactly is going to shake out as well as who would be do that because if anyone sold a house, whoever lived in it during that period of time is the one kind of do that. And now this is going back into a period of time when you could have had someone else as the owner. So there's some unknowns there. This was, this was an interesting year for our property tax base.
So you feel the projected is?
Split amongst the first, yeah, split amongst the first and second half collection.
Okay.
Which would span fiscal twenty-three, the bigger portion, and then fiscal twenty-four would be the second half collection.
Okay. So this is more a comment I, I share what Mrs. Schaefer said, you know, we have very happy to see the deficit spending pushed off to twenty twenty-five. That's definitely been a goal. Um, one of the things that I feel like sometimes we don't have these discussions except for during our five-year forecast conversation. And I would love for us as a board to have those conversations more often. Just a more regular discussion of where we're at and how are we, how are we approaching things? When I look at the pressure right now possibly heading into a recession, cost of borrowing possibly going up, CPI going up, and all of our families, all of us are experiencing that. What are we planning to do in terms of maintaining, containing costs and maintaining our programs that we think are really important for students? And that's not a conversation for tonight, but it is an ongoing conversation I think we need to be having.
The monthly treasure updates might be a good place for that.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, the S R dollars, we have until when to spend those?
September of twenty-four, which would be fiscal twenty-five.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, because I will say, I mean, to kind of echo your comments, Linda, it is a real testament to the team that we can be a district this large. And in the fifth year, although we don't like a deficit, I mean, we all understand that. But to have that smoothed it down to not a huge cliff, that, that takes a lot of work and effort on everybody's part.
Yeah, it does. And it's, it has to be an ongoing discussion and effort. And finally, I want to say thank you because I know you did very much involve the executive team in the process and an expectation that each department bears responsibility for this and for this work. And I think that's a great place to be. So thank you for that. Board, any further comments or questions? Otherwise, I will look for a motion to approve the five-year forecast.
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Please go ahead and call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
The motion passes.
Ms. O'Connor?
I'm sorry, yes.
Kind of have to vote.
Sorry about that.
Oh, it was passing anyway, but it's okay. The motion passes. We'll move to number eight, public comment. We do have several people signed up tonight. As a reminder, our public participation guidelines that we follow are stated in the Lakota Local School District Board of Education Policy zero one six nine point one. The board values public expression on educational issues. And the board also values an efficient and an orderly meeting. And therefore, public participation will be governed by the following rules as outlined in our policies. For our speakers, we've asked that you register your intent to speak. I have a list here of those that have requested to speak this evening. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Your address is already listed. You do not need to state it verbally. Each statement is asked to be limited to three minutes. We have a timer on our screen. At the point that you see it go to yellow, please wrap up your comments so that you are finished when it goes to red. Each statement must be directed to the presiding officer and no person may address or question board members individually. Please be mindful of the guidelines. If they're violated, there'll be a warning and then we'll ask you to sit down and forfeit the rest of your time. And please be respectful. We ask that of our audience as well. We'll go ahead and start. I'll ask you to line up as I call your name so that we move through this quickly. Mr. Dietrich will start. Mr. Argo is second. This is Luigi is third. Go ahead when you're ready, sir.
Brad Dietrich, thank you for having me speak today. I'm here on behalf of my autistic son and as a concerned citizen. First, I'm going to change my speech a little bit. I'm going to talk about PEC boards and why public participation is important. I emailed the superintendent and administrator of my kid's building last April and I never heard a word back. I called to, and while the Van Gordon front desk secretaries are amazing, they did not get anyone to respond back to me on my questions. The board did eventually reach out to me after seeing a comment on Lakota Cares Facebook. They forwarded my concerns to superintendent and others, but I have still no, heard nothing. So public participation is important and being able to give specific feedback is important. Please don't limit speaking at meetings or stifled topics. No matter how uncomfortable they may be, they will pass eventually. Um, now to my original comment I came here for. While on the meeting, we see Lakota had to pay fifteen thousand dollars because they couldn't comply with Public Meeting Acts and Sunshine laws. Uh, yet I have emailed Lakota three times and politely asked for public records to try to understand a financial decision to only build PEC boards at some of the schools and not all of them. Some of those emails I asked for are missing, and I know because I without personal emails that I sent to Lakota back in April. Hopefully with those emails, I can see why Lakota only purchased six PEC boards and only installed two of them. Why didn't we buy enough for all schools with playgrounds? I listened to a public meeting here talking about our special education needs and I heard, yes, 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 yes. But when it actually comes to it, nothing, you know, only six out of fifteen. So I mean, less than fifty percent. Um, uh, hopefully with those emails, I can see why only Lakota only purchased six and installed two. Then I can see why you only asked for one bid on an item that was twelve thousand dollars. You only bid on one. We only asked for one bid. If it was financial reasons on why Lakota couldn't provide PEC boards to all the schools with playgrounds, I'm sure there could have been creative reasons, creative ways to achievements. I would have installed them for free, for example. I'm sure multiple bids could have been tried. We could have reached out to a local business to sponsor the bo- boards. We could have used the fifteen thousand from the lawsuit reference here today if we followed the laws. But I'm really here today to reiterate the importance of public transparency and try to push Lakota to install PEC boards at every Lakota playground. Public transparency is important. As some of my public record requests, I read today that, that quote, special service staff and teachers feel this PEC boards at the playground are counterproductive to individual communication. That was from a Lakota member. Um, that is not what the data says. And even if the images are not specific to individual learners, I'm sure the teachers, intervention specialists and aides can incorporate those playground pictures going forward. They are pretty amazing, our teachers, intervention specialists and aides.
Mr. Dietrich?
Thank you.
I need to wrap up. Thank you. Mr. Argo, this is Luigi, this is Cameron.
Uh, my name is Alex Argo. Um, so I, I took my son, who is in the beginning seventh grade band to the joint marching band grand national send-off event that was held at Lakota East not too long ago. And I thought it was a terrific event culminating in a joint photo of the east and west bands together on the field. What else says we are Lakota more than that? I hope an event like this can become an annual tradition, even if the bands don't always go to grand nationals. Um, I did also have some thoughts on the new public comment policy as well. I think there are kind of two main issues with the new sign-in policy. Uh, one, it will raise the barrier of entry for public participation with the school board very high. Um, I'm fairly certain that I have heard every board member agree they value public comment and want to get feedback from people in the community who have a vested interest in the school district. You may not all agree who specifically that should be, but the goal is the same. This will make it harder for John Doe or Jane Smith to come to a board meeting and provide feedback. Maybe they didn't know the rule that they had to sign up by nine AM on the day of the board meeting. Perhaps they didn't have the technical skills to figure out how to find and fill out the form or find out when the agenda is posted or find their way to central office to do so. In fact, there are people who didn't know how to look up the agenda uh for the school board meetings while they are running for school board. And they ended up winning a seat. Uh anyways, it seems like it might be a bit much to ask community members for the purpose of giving public comment to do that. I'm all for technical solutions. I would sign up for the metaverse in my VR headset if it made sense. But I think maybe the low-tech alternative with cards versus a list that was discussed during policy meeting makes a little more sense personally and has most of the same advantages. Um, two, it, it will mean more of the same people. With only thirty minutes, these three-minute time slots will a lot of times fill up very quickly with most of the same people. Um, what's going to stop someone from scheduling and automating the submission of an electronic version of these forms? Even if uh, it's, you're required to have one uh separate Google account, that can be automated as well. Um, you used to have two thirty-minute periods and now there's just one. Why not one forty-five minute period instead? Um, the other area of concern that I had was the list of allowable content areas. This long list of items seems extremely hard to enforce by the chair. Other than the new employee clause, I'm not sure what previous public policy or what public comments would have been taken away. How are they supposed to check comments against all items on that list? This seems like another potential liability. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
This is Luigi, this is Cameron, and this is Steinbrink.
My name is Alyssa Luigi, and I want to share that as a parent, um, I don't feel that Lakota has tried to silence my voice or doesn't want to hear what I have to say. I've not felt bullied in any way whatsoever, even when I disagree with policies and decisions made by the district, which has absolutely happened, as most of you who have been part of this board in this district for a meaningful length of time know. No one would ever accuse me of not sharing my concerns. Um, I've spoken at this microphone before, but more importantly, and honestly, more effectively, I've reached out and spoken to staff at all levels, from my child's teacher to district staff. Heck, I stopped a curriculum department employee outside of the polls when I ran into him on election day to ask about a concern that someone brought to leads about graduation seals. And I received a great answer and learned more than I probably ever wanted to know about graduation seals and how they work. My love to the staff who physically put these stickers on diplomas. I had no idea how incredibly tedious this process is. Public comment is not by any means the only way for individuals to have their voice heard. Honestly, it's not really the most effective way to address an issue in most cases. I hope more parents and residents will take advantage of the wide variety of ways there are to share thoughts, ask questions, express concerns, and celebrate achievements. Additionally, thank you for prioritizing the voices of individuals who have a vested interest specifically in Lakota schools. Thank you for respecting residents, parents and guardians, business owners, employees and students. Thank you for the time and energy you have put into the public comment policy and the other policies. I don't envy your positions and the way that most of you are trying to navigate public comment in the face of our litigious society and individuals who seem to have a malicious intent. And while I can still single out an employee, thank you, Adam. Every time I hear in a financial summary, I'm reminded of how amazingly complex district finances are and you and your predecessor do a phenomenal job explaining things in understandable terms. On my final and unrelated point, um, I'd like to thank the district staff for their investment in real-world learning. My high school senior is blessed to have her second internship coordinated through Lakota's real-world learning department. And I'm thrilled that she has had two experiences to explore potential careers while still in high school.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Mrs. Steinbrink, Paulus, and Mrs. Redkey.
My name is Heather Cameron, and I'm going to be reading the things I'm thankful for Lakota addition. Um, I am grateful for our amazing educators, our principals. Um, at Indy this year, we have Mr. Mattingly, and he's amazing. The kids love him. The staff loves him and his um macho man costume is undeniably amazing. Um, I am thankful for the few board members and our superintendent who are concerned with issues actually happening in the district versus those who spew rhetoric from a national agenda to defund public education. I appreciate those who represent all students. I appreciate a solid financial outlook for our district due to the dedication of our current and past treasurers. I am thankful for fellow parents who value our educators, district and students and use critical thinking skills to do what's best for our students. I am thankful for the teachers and students who took the time to proudly represent Lakota at the Capitol Conference in Columbus. I am thankful for the amazing accomplishments of the Lakota West football team. Um, and for the school board members who understand the importance of the Ohio High School Athletic Association so that players, coaches and students could enjoy this amazing experience. I'm thankful for our student groups who did an amazing job representing us at OSBA. I'm thankful for a district that is innovative, a district that maintains excellent communication with families and students, and a district that recognizes the importance of su- supporting the whole child by addressing their social, emotional needs, curricular needs, gifted service needs and special needs. Um, and I'm thankful for the best board members who represent all students, listen critically and objectively, and don't put politics ahead of what is best for our students. Thank you.
This is Steinbrink.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Steinbrink. Heather's always a tough act to follow, but I'll try.
Would you bring the microphone down just a little more? Okay.
So I didn't have the opportunity to speak at the last board meeting because we had to listen to a lot of ugly inappropriate comments. But I did email the board, but I'd like to share my words again. Abomination to humanity, pure evil, horrific. Those words were spoken by Darby Bodie on October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, before the Ohio Board of Education when discussing proposed changes to Title Nine. Those are words I use to describe the events of the terrorists on our nation on September eleventh, which killed two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven innocent lives. Brutal slaughter of nineteen children and two teachers in Uvalde, Texas. The cold-hearted, cold-hearted murders of ten black Americans in Buffalo, New York fueled by bigotry. Their terrifying antisemitic attack on a synagogue in Pittsburgh, which killed eleven members. Storming of our nation's capital on January sixth, which claimed seven lives as a result. And even just in the last few days, we've had many major events that have taken, you know, taken lives that fall in those categories, abomination to humanity, pure evil and horrific. These are not words one typically uses to describe protections for children. In fact, these are words most often used to describe the absolute worst of humanity, like those involved in the events I mentioned. The Title Nine changes that have been proposed are not an affront to women's athletics, nor are they an abomination to humanity. And they do not constitute institutionalized child abuse. LGBTQ youth are at high risk of suicide, not because of their gender identity or sexual orientation, but of how they are mistreated and stigmatized in society by people like Mrs. Bodie. Denying anyone, especially a child, from living in any way but their true authentic self is the abomination. People who deny them protections are the actual purveyors of evil. And it's people opposed to protecting these children's rights who are the child abusers. I strongly urge the Lakota School Board to publicly denounce such language as presented by Mrs. Bodie. She should be censured for going on record as a member of the Lakota School Board and loudly disparaging efforts to protect children everywhere, but especially in our very own community. To continue, I look forward to seeing more student spotlights and praise for their fantastic accomplishments without the childish interruptions by members of the board discussing adult topics in front of their children, their really proud families. I saw them with my own eyes, those parents looking really disappointed when the adult advisors were trying to distract and comfort those little kids. Even Mrs. Bodie's on-sweaker was visibly unhappy to be at the meeting. And then she had the misfortune to hear inappropriate discussion by her mother and members in the audience. It was embarrassment to everyone in the room who witnessed the outburst. Please do the job, all of you that you were voted into do by the members of the community who supported you, as well as those who vote she did not.
Steinbrink, please wrap up.
I'm sorry. Um, just, I'd like to end on a positive note by thanking Superintendent Miller for her strength and continued leadership through the character assassinations against him. I look forward to the board getting back to the business and working with the community to overcome challenges that we have. Thank you.
This is Redkey.
Well, I didn't prepare. My name's Lee Redkey. I didn't prepare a speech, but I did put a few items. Um, in following the previous two, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for all the In following the previous two, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for all the successes that has happened this year. Sort of the end of the year, December, sort of a holiday month. So I thought, well, this is a good time to just wrap up. What's happened during the year. I know that a lot of things have been put on the burner. And I know that you're all eager to get started with getting to the projects and the things at hand. And so one of the things I want to mention is the facility plan. I know that you were supposed to submit something to the state in October. I'm not sure that did happen. But if we could have an update on some of these things, either next month or at the beginning of the year. Because I think since they've been on hold, you're probably going to be focused on these projects. The other thing is the Lakota report card. I know that some of the numbers were probably not what you expected or wanted. And you probably are going to have a meeting to develop strategies and methods to improve those numbers. And look how you can change those. The other one is the curriculum audit. I know that has been a discussion at every meeting. And I'm not sure where that's at right now. And quite honestly, I've been following the meetings for about ten years. Either in person or remotely. And many of you, I, I know your email by heart because I've sent them to you before. But I'm not sure, and it's just my guess, I don't think you're going to find a whole lot in the CRT. But what I do believe is that in, in Mr. ID, you have mentioned it over and over. If the parents or those that are responsible for students in this system. If they see something, if they hear something, they should report it. And I'm sure that's what you're all wanting. Some people may have done it. But then some people may not even be mentioning it. They're just talking out in the community. And that's not going to resolve it at all. So I know that you probably are going to be working on that, definitely at the beginning of next year. The other thing, and I know one of the board members mentioned this, I looked at the budget, I looked at it online, I picked this up. I listened to you, Adam, and I agree. We're in uncertain times. We really do not know what's going to even happen next month or next year. So the five-year forecast, I applaud you. It was very detailed. Your explanation was great. But if we could have a report, maybe not monthly, but you know.
I need to ask you to wrap up, please.
Oh, shoot. Okay. Oh, wow. Okay. Is the workforce. I was watching the screen. I didn't see it there.
So it's okay. I need to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, workforce, I know there's retirees, there's people maybe leaving, there's people not even going into education. But we can't wait till that happens. Please put that on your agenda and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, would you please get in touch with Mr. Dietrich?
Yes, I just sent you an email about that, but yes.
Great, if you would talk directly to him.
Sure.
It'd be appreciated. And just for a point of clarification on the settlement agreement that was on the agenda tonight, that was over the enforcement of our current policy. And it is why our policy is being changed, but that was the current policy being enforced. So. I will leave that there and I will board. Without further discussion, look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. D. Mrs. Schaefer?
Second.
Mr. Zink?
Yes. Mr. D?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Linda, you gave your, your final thoughts and I would like to give mine as well.
We are taking a vote on adjournment?
Oh, so only you.
You're taking a vote on adjournment? Do you have a vote?
Yes, I do.
What's your vote?
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
You know, I'm undecided because you didn't allow us.
Let's come back to Mrs. Bodie. Go ahead.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.